Well, I have one item on the agenda today that is the continued public hearing for 688 Great Road. Do we have the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. Before we get started, just a few reminders, sorry, just to make sure. So we certainly invite the applicant to make his presentation and invite members and associate members to ask any questions, address any concerns as they may come up. If after that, we'll also be asking for town staff to attempt that they have any questions or comments. After that, we will be taking public comment. My practice is to start with the folks in the room, then we'll move to anybody on Zoom. Depending on how long it's going for, we may be able to allow certain individuals to provide a second comment. But I am basically reserving the discretion to keep this to one comment per person only because I know there's a number of folks who want to provide some input. I'm going to repeat this later, but I'll say it now anyways, just for the benefit of everyone. As members of the public can provide public comment, it's to be directed actually to the board. And we can take what you have to say or ask under consideration. The applicant is has the option of responding to a public comment. They certainly don't have to, they can simply respectfully stay silent and that's, that's okay. We won't take a consideration for or against one way or the other. So with that, I will turn it over to the applicant for their presentation.
So Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the audience here on Zoom, my name is Bill Poyet. I'm representing the applicant tonight. Just sort of couple of preliminary comments if I can, I just want to refer back to there's been a long process to get this here, this planning board hearings, conservation commission hearings, rezoning of the property to a sort of extent, so I just like to mention that for the record and to reference that select board's letter that's in the public record because it does a great job of summarizing some of those things and some of the other considerations that I don't have to repeat here, obviously. And I also want to mention, you know, the application, we did provide a fairly extensive memo and outline all the issues and variance criteria. So tonight, what we're hoping to do is really to supplement that mostly with some visual aids that will illustrate a couple of things. One is how the variance standards are addressed and met in the application. And as importantly, how some of the concerns raised by the neighbors, by staff regarding specifically our application, but also things we've picked up during the planning board hearings as well. And we think that well, our goal was to answer all those things, to take the neighborhood's concern seriously. And we've applied the state of the art technology to alleviate those concerns with no visibility like pollution, flare and all those questions people have and concerns they've raised. So we, as you can see, we have a nice stack of things here, so we're hoping that we addressed all them. Of course, if there's any lingering questions, we can try to discuss those tonight as well as we can, including, I know we got a letter today, we did have a chance to review it this evening we got here. And we also think that some of the concerns raised there are also addressed. They were anticipated in some of the materials we provide tonight. So we're hoping our board sees the efforts we've made in that regard as well. So I just want to start quickly with sort of a new plan and new graphic. This is an overlay of the yellow is actually the zoning district our property is situated in. And this is the project site right there, right in the center. Arbor Glen Development and then Corlin Drive, Orchard Drive are off here. The lot to the south of us, there's a development plan, I think it's working its way through permitting, I believe, or it's about to be in permitting. And we also have acquired the latest draft plans for that development to try to show and again anticipating what potential impacts are there to show the audience and the board how the location of the fields and the technology that we're employing mitigate any effects on that property again, as well as the other broader neighborhood. So what this plan shows quickly is, as, as you know, and I kind of go back and forth just to the site's a sort of a more bond office campus and has a lot of development in this area. Infrastructure, buildings, pathways, parking lots, lighting, utilities. There's roughly in this area, I think the board members can remember this, Decepticon. So considerable development on the property with existing structures. This is a major wetland that's affecting the property. And again, if you were to look, it's essentially in this area right here. There's another smaller wetland with screen in that area of the property. And then, you know, the Arbor Glen neighborhood and the Corlin Drive and Orchard Drive neighborhood being already developed. Similar, you know, a little bit of wetlands on those properties, the site to the south of us, not much. And lots further to the south, limited development and not much wetland. And again, we have kind of an irregularly shaped, non-rectangular lot. So it's just sort of a quick visual of how our lot is especially affected by certain conditions, development, structures, wetlands, the shape that, you know, affects some of the other lots in the district, but not generally, I'd say. And that's sort of a standard. It doesn't mean that some of those things don't touch other land in the district, but I think it's, I mean, to me, it looks pretty plain that our land is sort of affected by those things to a greater degree than the general district. So I thought that might be helpful for that purpose. And then this is just, again, it's a, it's a depiction of our lot, the existing buildings that are being repurposed for the school, the location of the fields here, other existing buildings that we're hoping to use. And, you know, some other field potential locations. And then again, this is an overlay of the current proposed development on that southern lot. And then again, the Arbor Glen, Corlin and Orchard neighborhoods. So this is northeast, south and west for orientation. So just, I want to sort of just say one, one more thing. So there's been, you know, the question is, can, one of the questions is, could we relocate the fields somewhere that we could meet the setback requirements? The illumination is a different thing, we'll obviously talk about that tonight too. But the, if we, we could try to rotate them up into this direction and to try to hit the 200 feet. But I'm just going to say now, what we're going to be showing later with additional exhibits is that if we do that, we're going to push the site more, push the fields more into the middle of the site, which deprives us of the ability to use some of the natural features of the land to screen what we're proposing. And if we push it out this way again, you know, doesn't have as much offer. And you'll see how that impacts of that work because of the grading in the area, the height of the trees and so on and grading and elevations of this site. But again, when we start to rotate them and push them in this direction to try to hit that 200 foot setback, it creates more visibility and we're trying to avoid that. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John and I can pitch in as necessary, but don't take it, take it from there.
Thank you, Bill. Off for the record, Jonathan Charlock and Regis Sir Lancy, architect with Actutas, and we're the athletic field designers for the project. So Bill was noting the previous plan was showing the overall master plan that's been shared with the planning board, conservation commission and the town in the past. This, this application along with playing more conservation is very specific to phase one, which is the athletic fields in the southern portion of the facility. So to talk briefly about the athletic fields, there are two synthetic fields that we use at the same time. So we have two baseball diamonds and then in the outfield, a rectangular fields for soccer, field hockey and lacrosse. So ideally, when the fields are being used, there'll be two potential games at once. So maybe a baseball field, a baseball game being played here with rectangle score here, baseball down here with rectangle. By no means will there be four activities at once, most likely there'll be two, two activities along with practices and other multipurpose use. As it relates to the adjacent properties, we do have some distance here where we've recognized distances from some of the adjacent properties to the closest light poles. This has been some of the discussion with the planning board is specifically views from these adjacent properties to the closest light poles. We'll talk about that a little bit into the presentation, but as we do reference the closest light pole along Old Bolton Road to a number of the residents were in about 1,500 feet, just about 1,300 feet, so quite, quite a distance. As you look at the closest light pole to those properties, and in most of those cases, the existing Bose building is situated right in the middle. And then we have about 700 or so feet from the closest light pole in the northeast corner to the development to the east. And again, this probably dying existing campy of about 600 feet of existing vegetation of evergreens deciduous between those closest residential properties and proposed athletic fields. And then as previously noted, the cottage is just south of our property. We were able to use their drawings that have been going through the planning and the town process to show for reference, right now, there's about 375 feet from the closest light pole to the closest cottage part of that town. And as we go through the presentation, one of the requests from the planning board was to start thinking about what the views may be from those adjacent properties to some of those light poles. So there are several locations around the property that we took some images with some drones indicating where the heights of the closest light poles are. And we have some of those graphics to show them a little bit. On the left-hand side, we have the photometric plan that was developed for the application included in our application materials. The proposed design is for 50-foot candles, which is a typical light level for athletic fields. And your, your regulations require a maximum of 20, which is just not adequate for the type of use that is occurring here, which is high school level, baseball, soccer, lacrosse and field hockey. If you look at other towns and others comparable facilities, they are being designed to 50-foot candles as well. So by no means are we looking for a foot candle level that well exceeds a high school use and is looking toward not for that. We're, we're looking to achieve the right amount of safe use for light levels for the users. Two, one of the other items that's part of the variance application is the proximity of three of these light poles are within the 200-foot buffer from the existing property line. So we have some sections to show what it means for those light poles as it relates to the southern property, along with a little bit of spill that we're showing onto the southern property as well.
While you're moving that, my recollection during the site visit was that the vegetation that's currently situated around the field, there's no intention of actually taking it down.
Correct. Yep. And we were actually able to this past weekend with drone imagery to confirm specifically the vegetation to the south of the property is around 70 to 80 feet tall. So we have some sections to illustrate that. And then to the east side, we're about 60 feet, so it sounds all right. So do you want to talk a little bit about the lighting system we're using to give a little bit of explanation sort of what we're proposing here versus what has been done in the past over, let's say, the last 30, 40 years? So the way, you know, fields were lit in the past, 1977 is a good image to show, you know, really, you know, using floodlighting to try to cast light as best as possible, get these fields lit. No efficiency involved, just let's get light on the fields as best as possible for the users. And obviously over the last 40 plus years, along the law of laying regulations for multiple communities, dialing that light, trying to take care of glare and spill are extremely important. So as you can see, sort of, we were, you know, designing fields in the late seventies with the flood lighting, trying to control that lighting as the years gone on. 2005 was really the way, the, the last technology before what we're dealing with, with LED lighting, which essentially they were taking the flood lighting, like you show down here, and they were trying to shield it from a dark sky standpoint, but still trying to get light across the field. And you can see, you know, in this image, these, these images are taken from about 150 feet away. So if you're across an athletic field, understanding what you're seeing with those different types of light levels. So where, you know, they were shielding for dark sky in 2005 to about 2012 or 13, we're still seeing some light, as you're saying, on the field. So the current LED technology that has been in the marketplace for the last five or six years has that light completely shielded. So where you see no light above here, that's what we anticipate the lighting being when you're within 150 feet, if not a lot further away. And I sort of reference back to the distances I spoke about earlier, where a number of those residents adjacent to the property are well over that 150 feet. So where you have 700 and then you have oh, into the 1,500 feet, you know, as you get further away from these light fixtures, that light's going to be darker and darker. So you can see at 150 feet, we're still pretty dark when you're on the ground level. I believe that image was taken about six feet above finish grade. So figure a few inches lower than my height, that's what you're seeing as you're looking across. To also speak a little bit about the height of the light, so obviously we have some light poles are within 70 to 90, we do have one that's 100 feet. When you're designing athletic fields such as this, the goal is to get those poles as high as they need to be, so we're shining light down onto the field. Again, this is addressing glare and spill. This image shows here where, you know, in this particular image, it's a 70-foot light pole that's trying to shine the light down, get down to zero foot candles as quick as possible on that far edge. But if you went with a short pole, 40 feet, you're pushing that light much further across the surface. So actually you're creating a lot more glare and spill as you get lower with those light poles. And every design's a little bit different. So where, you know, the, the size of our field is set the way it is for the different athletic field uses, that's where they're designing the poles. By all means, you know, they could do 80, 70, it's more efficient for everyone. So we're going as high as we need to be with as minimal poles as possible, so it's a 14 pole light system. So, you know, when we start talking about, well, can we get those poles lighter? Now you're introducing a 15th or 16th pole. So trying to be as sufficient as we can by raising those to the height they need to be while also minimizing the number of poles required. And just as a precedent for a project that we completed a few years ago for the town of Lexington, this is based on looking at the foot candles. There is part of the photometrics plan, bring this back up. From the space more to when we're getting to the zero foot. So this, this gray shaded in area is outside blue line, that's when the design gets the zero foot candle. So when these athletic fields are designed, we're trying to get direct light from the athletic field itself. And then all of this light that's going on the outside edge, that's getting down to zero foot candles, that's industry-wide just references indirect light. So that's really the backside, the light fixtures where we're trying to get those to zero foot candles as quick as possible. This is a good reference from a design and, and a built installation where you're seeing these yellow green lines on the outside edge. That is mimicking, this whole shaded in area is very much mimicking what we have with our design for our facility. And then this is the built image where you're seeing, you know, where all this outside edge is getting us to zero foot candles, how quickly that light from the athletic field is going down to zero foot candle. So where we're, you know, safely lighting the athletic field for consistent light for athletic field use, even though, you know, design-wise, this is showing a lot more spill and glare, it is really getting much darker very quick.
What time was that picture taken?
What time?
Time of day?
Uh, this, this image was sometime tonight.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I mean, I, you know, it's probably this time of year.
We do, right?
Yeah. And, and, you know, because one, one of the things you can see is along the road here, so we have the road here and they're showing a lot, lot still here. This is the road entered here, so with a little bit of light you're seeing, that's actually the light poles for the, for the street itself. So, so light, that light gets dialed down very quickly, but that's really in reference to really understanding what the spill and glare means outside the edges. Because we are getting to one foot candle on the green edge, red is half, and then the blues is zero. So again, we can't get to zero right off the, the green surface immediately, but we designed this facility where we're getting off it as, as quickly as efficiently as possible.
Can I just ask, have you turned a little bit so folks back here can just see that image? Is that possible? No, I was more concerned about these ladies trying to see.
To the extent that there's a slide that not going to be moved anymore, we're always put it up there on the chairs. So. Yeah, that's okay.
So one of the questions that came up from the planning board was the relationship of the lighting that's closest to our property line to the proposed cottages south. So just for reference, most of the plans have been shown in this orientation, so we're just rotating this, we can talk about that section a little bit. So as we did a little bit digging into the proposed plans are from the town right now, one of the things we noticed right off the bat was the elevation of our athletic fields, which is around 240, elevation 243. The closest cottage that's about 375 feet away from the closest pole is at elevation 316. So there's about a 70, 75 foot grade change in this area. You can see that the existing contours, quite steep slope, three to one, two to one or so. So when we took a look at this section here, really understanding again, that this is about 75 feet of existing vegetation that we confirmed with the drone image. And then this, this 74 feet is based on their drawings of the, the earthwork they need to clear and through here. The closest pole to that property essentially is about 17 feet taller from the finish grid of the existing building and with all the existing vegetation through here, which is just under 300 feet. So just, just a little shy of the length of football field.
What's the height of that pole?
That pole right there, that is a 90-foot pole. So even though we are, we're at 90 feet, there's about 75 foot grade change through there, we're pretty confident that there's, you know, existing screening through here that's not going negatively affect that house, which is the closest. And then most of those other proposed cottages start to move away, so that this is the closest one in proximity. To the other sections, we also started to look at for the two locations where the spill on our design was shown going off property at, at the highest amount. So section BB, we showed spillage about 84 feet from the property line into the adjacent property. And then section C, right down here, for about 57 feet. So again, understanding with that existing vegetation campy, when these photometrics are designed, we can only do this in, in a computer two dimensionally. We can't factor vertical elements. So now that we know that there's a 75-foot height of existing vegetation, we're confident that these spills that are shown on plan will certainly not be to the degree they are with, with existing vegetation. Existing vegetation is going to certainly help screen that so that, you know, that 84 feet or that 57 feet to get to the zero foot handle should be much more decreased because of the existing vegetation on those ends. And same to the previous section, where again, we're, we're showing the spill in through here about 60 feet. And that, that light pollution should not occur with all of that existing vegetation, that should be well within that, that 60 feet as it's shown. And then last week, we want to talk a little bit about existing vegetation around the entire site, specifically some of those images that we were able to take with the drones to understand what, what like poles will look like in each person, towards all the rest. So to give you a little bit of context, the Bose building here, this is looking north this way. So our, our drone, this is a drone image that was taken above the southern property. It shows the athletic fields as they sit in their proposed configuration with the 14 pole light system. This is the lesion base here. The Bose building is, you can see on the far east side, this is about 600 feet or so of existing vegetation between the proposed building and the closest resident over there. And then in this backyard, you can see Old Bolton Road behind some of this existing vegetation. So as you can see, not only on site, but also offsite, there's a great amount of existing vegetation along with the building that will certainly help screen any views from Old Bolton Road and the residence to the east.
This has created curiosity, yep. And again, this is an ignorant comment, so you might go have a very easy answer. Was it ever taken into consideration to put lights in? Well, actually, no, you can't do that. Is there space to put it in between the two soccer fields or does that tread onto the baseball field?
Are you saying sort of put some lane in through here?
Yeah, yeah, have it, have it going, going that way rather than the other side?
Typically.
Why wouldn't you do that?
For a multipurpose, you used to be honest.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, because that, that, that sort of introduces specifically from a rectangular standpoint, we want to be careful with glare. So you never really want to put light poles between or right behind the end lights. Because the reality too is, you know, when you're on the athletic surface, say you're playing soccer, ball goes up there, you look up, you want to be very careful that you're not looking right at the bottom of the light, because that's the reality, as you look up, you don't see that light. So usually a lot of these lights are configured in specific locations so that you don't see that specific baseball, you know, soccer, they try not to be in the corners again for the use of that as well. So really that's keeping those off the field surface, it's got a lot to do with the playability, multipurpose. So let's say for some reason if the school decides, hey, we're just going to put three small fields here for practice, it, it takes away their ability to use as a fully multipurpose space.
There's no gap in the right field from the bottom baseball field?
I'm sorry, say it again.
There's no, there's, there's no gap in the light, in the lighting, in the, in, as I said, right field?
That triangle on the lower right there?
Yeah, yeah, right field there?
Yep, that, that all gets lit as well.
All right.
Yeah, this, this is all part of the baseball field.
Right, 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 right. But it's the, the pole that's in the bottom corner of the bottom soccer field is sufficient for that right field area?
It is, and, and again, part of that has to do with the height of the poles. I believe this is a 90-foot and that's a 70-foot. So these being both 90-foot, again, they're getting tall because they got to spread that light. You know, if they were a little bit shorter, we would never want to put a pole here again, because it's right down the foul line. So that, that's a little bit of the, the push and pull to figure out how tall those lights could be to get all that light cast across the field.
Thank you.
Real quick, what's A, B, and C and D for the lights of each?
I'm sorry, say it again.
The heights of A, B, C, and D?
A, B, C.
I assume they're all, A's are all the same height, B's are all the same height.
Well, not necessarily.
Not necessarily, okay.
We do have.
There's an assumption I made, sorry.
This drawing was part of.
That one over there, he submitted that I think as the heights.
Yes.
Yeah.
Those are the distances to the property.
Those are the distances.
Yep. So generally speaking, I believe this is a 100-foot pole here. These four are 90-footers. This one down here is 90, the two behind baseball carries, I believe are 70. And then I believe these enter here at 80. So I do know that for B2 pole, that's the only pole, that's 100 feet. So the ABC donation, but then the number of rooms on each pole? I'm sorry, say it again.
Then, then A, B, C, and D. What's the difference between A, B, C, and D?
So those are usually the configuration of how they are for baseball. So usually the A poles are located directly behind home plate. The B poles are usually down the foul lines and then C slash D, those are usually Alpha. It's, it's more how they define what those pole locations are. But it, it doesn't mean the Cs mean it, the Ds are not, you think of that.
I was just trying to find the gist of it.
And then the last piece we want to talk about is the pictures I discussed earlier. So in several locations, A, B, C, D, E, and F, we took real images with the drone up to. So, um, in several locations, A, B, C, D, E, and F, uh, we took real images with, um, the drone up to a certain number of heights to try and then it specifically two poles. So I believe, uh, the hundred foot pole, which is this location here and an eighty foot pole here. Where really the two poles out, any of the images, uh, were being observed from these locations. So we'll start. So this is, uh, location A, which is on Old Bolton Road and looking towards the building. And you can see depending on your angle on the street, this is the eight of eighty foot pole. That's exposed right above, uh, the Bose building. And again, how this was achieved was, uh, sending a drone to that eighty foot height and being on the road. So this is a true image, it's not a rendering. What you will notice, it's this really a little pinch point where we see the pole. If you start moving west down Old Bolton, a lot of this vegetation actually starts screening that one pole. And we also went to the hundred foot height and some of the other heights, no, no other poles were observed. So that, that one C one at that location was observed.
Hey, you guys, can I just ask you a quick question? This, I'm Ruth, I'm another, um, of the ZBA members. When you have conditions that are misty or foggy, how does that impact the light spillage?
Did you hear that, John?
Yeah. So I mean, from, from a still and glare standpoint, that shouldn't affect what, what we're proposing on the field. If there's fog or incline weather, really, especially since we're talking about a, a majority of the light being in this general area, it really shouldn't affect that too much. Location B, which is taken from the entrance road coming into the facility. Uh, C one, which is an eighty foot pole, that was a pole that was observed in this location. Uh, what's interesting to know about that is actually from this location, the poles in the parking lot, because the spatial distance is actually was exposed at a higher elevation from where the person was taking a picture than that eighty foot pole in this location. The hundred foot pole also was not observed in this general location we're showing. Location C, which is, uh, a little bit more into the parking lot, where we were a little bit more concerned that as you start getting into the parking lot area, you're starting to see some more of those views. Uh, this was the only location where the hundred foot pole was observed. Uh, so you can see that, that's generally where the height of that drone was, and that's us interpolating light pole in that location. And then three additional locations, so D being from the parking lot, community park, E being a little bit down into the athletic field, and F on that adjacent property. No lane was observed in any of those locations. So again, the drone was flown in these general locations, not great to pat the sun, but it was a little bit early in the morning. And then as we were in the road looking in that direction, none of the poles that were flown, whether the hundred, the eighty, or any closest to those locations were observed. So, you know, realistically, you know, there's a little bit of exposure to the A pole. We were able to see one or two of those poles from these locations, but, um, what's a very nice thing is that there's a lot of existing vegetation that's really helping a lot of the adjacent neighbors and properties from seeing any of these poles in these locations.
Now, I think, again, um, I just want to reiterate the point that I think you can appreciate that that if the field was pushed more toward the center of the site to try to hit that two hundred feet or minimize the setback variances requested, you'll get more visibility. The poles will be more exposed, uh, to the neighborhood. So we, I don't think, you know, I wouldn't want that result. So again, being able to put the field there, I think, gives us some benefit to be able to use the existing topography of our site and the adjacent sites as well as the, the vegetative buffer. Yeah. So John's showing, um, again, just trying to rotate that field a little to the left and above, but I mean, John can point it out, it puts that bottom right hand corner of the field in the wetlands, that lighter green shading is the wetlands. Clearly you don't want to or can't do that. Uh, and so and, and so even pushing, pushing it further to try to get it out of the wetlands, again, is going to expose more of the poles to neighborhood views or street views. So I, I, you know, we're trying to avoid that obviously as well if we can.
Yeah, and that was really a study to see, can we get that outside that two hundred foot water and what does that achieve for us?
One of the other things I just want to say on the, the, the illuminance is that the current standard isn't, it, it's not really recommended. In fact, it's probably unsafe. And, and John can, you know, speak to that as well for high school sports. So as he mentioned Lexington and all, you know, our peer institutions would have that same level. So the, the bylaw, I, I don't know why that was chosen, maybe at the time that was a prescribed level of lighting. But it's, it, the literal enforcement of that would create unsafe fields, uh, for spectators and players. So I just wanted to try to make that point as well. Uh, we don't really want to create an unsafe condition. And it's, um, the regulatory body that controls this does not prescribe anything lower than.
Yeah, the fifty foot candles, and it's really for the use of baseball lacrosse. It didn't even feel like just the nature of the field to play that sport. The balls are being used, it's really a safety thing. You know, there, there's been situations where we designed fifty foot candles for baseball infield, thirty for the outfield, that's a baseball field only use. So when we start to incorporate them across the field hockey, um, it, it's standard practice to have that, that consistent fifty foot candles. And, and again, it's primary for the safety of the athletes using the fields.
Just who publishes those standards? So again, who publishes those standards? A crazies and, uh, publishers of. Try to go look for them, where are they at, fine?
Sure, the American Sports Builders Association and also I will, I can follow up with you on the, the electrical.
It's, it's cited in, in our brief, in one of the footnotes.
I went, I went to IES, they have standards.
Yes.
And, and basically, you know, they were saying thirty to fifty feet or, uh, for call a high school level, yes, generally. One quick question, did you take pictures of the height of the poles going from the west where it's fairly clear? The trees aren't in that, over in that direction, but did you do any, um, it from the western direction? Yeah, because as I said, there's a lot of trees below into the side, at that one section, it's, it's a fairly clear, um, shot to the street.
Yeah, I mean, we were able to get on the community park, I believe this is a private residence, so once we were able to get on there. So that's why we tried to do our best to get, you know, generally location, knowing, you know, that this is a pre, uh, there, there is some decent vegetation.
Yeah, I just didn't know if we were able to get to the street and just take it from the street from, you know, directly west.
Yeah. I'm sorry, is this, is this maple down here?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we need to go all the way down.
Do you know by any chance what, uh, the lighting's like at the show, the high school? Or what they're planning in the new high school?
Yeah.
I don't know, I can add to the project.
So on a given day, what would be typical on, off cycle be for the lighting?
So I, I believe, so, so the town bylaws allow laying up to about ten o'clock at night. Uh, I believe the typical activities for nighttime use would generally end around nine o'clock. Um, with a potential offer, if there's some rain delays or things like that, but certainly meaning the requirement of having the lighting off by ten o'clock. I think the intent is, you know, between nine and ten o'clock.
And come on around dusk or earlier or?
I, I assume when needed, right? So, so the, the laying systems have a technology that essentially the, the person that operates the lane can use their cell phone to make sure their, their program turned on and off. So I think, you know, at a night like tonight, it was raining, you don't need to have the lights on, maybe shut off. Um, so it's really just going to be for intended nighttime use that generally will probably go till, yeah, this time of year, fall, maybe a little bit later. There's no intent to, to be laying these fields in the winter, especially if they're, they're using the field a little bit. There's no, not a lot of doing it in twenty degree weather. Um, and then start up the lights again, you know, in springtime season. And then as it continues to get lighter during the day, you know, the, the light usage decreases as we get more light during the season.
Thank you.
Is this a seven day event or, or use, or is it, do you have six days, five days? So how many nights would it, they actually be on the field, like?
If they're not in the summer? Or what, what's the plan in the summer?
Yeah, it's possible in, in the summer as well.
Okay. Because is the school going to be open in the summer or is it more for camps? I mean, I, I realize it's a business plan issue, but.
Yeah, the advances for camps or maybe if they've got some sort of scrimmage games or something going on. Look, in the summer, you might kick them on for a half hour, forty-five minutes, because it's staying late till eight o'clock, you know, anyways. But in general, um, you know, Monday through Friday, they go from school, finish at, uh, you know, five o'clock and then rentals would come in till about nine. Nine o'clock's kind of the dead end. But again, if you had some rain or some overtime, it might go a little later. And on the weekends, you know, uh, around the same. Nothing in the winter.
Other initial questions or thoughts from members of the board?
Am I understanding correctly, when you say the, on the photometric lighting plan there, is that fifty foot candles that that's based on?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not this kind of specific lighting setup that's based off of fifty foot, sorry.
So, so the, the field is designed to fifty foot candles?
Okay.
Yeah.
So then we were talking the, you know, some of them being eighty, some of them being ninety?
The, that, that was the reference of the, the pole heights.
Pole heights, okay. And so that, that's not, that, to all of the candles, so it's at fifty?
Correct. It, it, they're basically based on average foot candle fifty for the design.
Are there any other, any other sort of board level lighting in the area? Walkways? I don't know if you guys have concessions, anything like that?
We haven't, so there's existing lighting on site now. They'll be continued for use, but there, there's no additional pedestrian level or parking lot level lighting. Because again, for the most part, the parking lot's staying exactly the same, right? There's really no other renovations. You know, with the exception of really what's going on here, and there's a little bit of parking, just because we have a little bit of storm or mansion we're putting here. For the most part, all this existing parking, all the existing landscape is staying the same. So the existing light that remains will remain on the operational night, I assume how it used to be when it was the Bose facility.
So what will the neighbors actually see when the lights are on and it's nine o'clock at night?
So ideally, it's, it's that initial image I was showing. So for those few poles in those locations where I would say, you know, with, with no, no sideline for here and, and the sidelines are over here. It really, it's, the, this is the design that we're looking at. So there, there's, you know, light that's going to be going down onto the field, but where they're looking up over at those lights, there's not going to be any light shining in their direction. Then, you know, in, in the cases of most of the adjacent neighbors, they're seeing, you know, so, so for instance, we're noting that this light goes the closest to these neighbors. However, this light is also shining this way. So they're looking at the back of the fixture that's also not casting light if you are on the front side.
Okay.
Um, these light fixtures are all aiming for the field. Again, we'll, we'd have the same, um, zero light you're looking at, but there's, these lights are so far back, there's no sight views to those light fixtures. Really, really the only two lights that we were able to get any type of views are, was that one location at the hundred and that was one or two of these light poles. But for the most part, all these other lights, we couldn't find with the drone any views from all these other locations we're looking at.
So there generally would not be any real glow, as they're seeing or?
There shouldn't be, no. No, because again, all the light is dialed down onto the field and, and everything has that cutoff, so it was nice, still on glare.
Then images from a hundred and fifty feet, I think it's important to understand.
Yep.
Distances are much greater.
Yeah. So, so for instance, with our site views, you know, one of these poles that's looking this way, it's impossible for any of the views up here to actually see that, again, based on the existing vegetation, the building, and just the, the proximity of seeing something so far back with your sight lines looking at the building.
Other questions or comments from the board at this time? Unless we have anything else for a moment, when I open it up for, okay, thank you. Anything from the staff?
Uh, just one thing I'd like the board to make a determination on. Um, there's just different opinions that circulated regarding section four two one, which is about the height restrictions. My interpretation, well, it reads the height of any building or structure will not exceed thirty-five feet unless a special permit has been granted by the planning board. My interpretation is that they can, the planning board can grant the height of the pole. But under this, it can't grant the height of the fixture, because that is regulated under something, under three eight one five one. If the board agrees, it would just have to be an additional variance, or if you disagree, then the planning board can get that required for, get the height of a hundred.
Go ahead, may I?
Please, yes.
Yeah. So we also took a look at that and probably haven't, you sent it through earlier this morning, so you haven't had a chance to look at it. So I would encourage, um, the board also to look at a couple of other articles, uh, sections of the bylaw. And so as, they don't have this, Michael, was that?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. So as a general matter, it looks to me in my analysis, sort of applying the way the bylaw has been interpreted here regarding the setbacks in the, the illuminance. That the same analysis should apply. So if you, if you take a quick look at bylaw section, it's three eight one five, well, three eight one five two through three eight one five six. It, the structure of all those sections is to authorize the planning board to deal with lighting. And not just the lighting of athletic fields, which they have the ability to do by special permit at use, but also just exterior lighting in general. It's all under that, you know, those several sections. And then there's a specific section that, um, is three point eight point one, point five, point four. It says that planning board can, by special permit, create, will provide additional relief regarding any condition of the table. I know this is cumbersome, but that's how the bylaws are in the table in section three eight one five six. So the table in three eight one five six, it reads like a dimensional table. It talks about the height of fixtures, it talks about the cutoff requirement, a, a, a bunch of different conditions applied to exterior lighting. And it says the planning board can vary any of those conditions with one exception, that it can only grant additional lumens up to four thousand additional lumens. So the way that should be interpreted, in my opinion, is the same way that the setback provision should be interpreted. Which says that the planning board can, by special permit, permit athletic field lighting. But it can't, but it's subject to the two hundred foot setback and it's subject to the illuminance, right, illuminance. And the way that's been interpreted is that then becomes, if you're going over those things, then it becomes a ZBA variance matter. So I don't, so that interpretation to me should carry over to the provision where it says the planning board can by special permit alter the table. And the table talks about thirty-five foot height limit for fixtures. So to me, the bylaw gives height and lighting to the, to the planning board, except where those specific constraints put on the planning board are being exceeded.
You see, you're, I try reading the right thing here. So in three eight one five four, let's just get my thoughts. You're interpreting that as saying that, that any change to the table can be done except for four thousand moments? You're interpreting that as saying that, that any change to the table can be done except for four thousand moments?
Yeah. Up to four thousand.
Right, 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 right. I, I understand that we said there can be a change to up to four thousand lumens, but you're interpreting, that's what I'm trying to understand. You're interpreting that sentence as saying, any change can be made to the table, except when it comes to additional lumens, then you're capped at four thousand.
Correct. Because it says, the planning board can grant a special permit for lighting that does not conform to the conditions of the table.
But it's reversing. Up to four thousand moments, it doesn't, I, I don't know if I.
Up to four thousand.
I, I don't know if I agree with that, to be perfectly honest, and we can discuss this more, but I, I read that as saying that you can. You can, you can provide for an additional four thousand moments, but that, that it's limited to just that. It's not a, you can grant any exception you want to all of these conditions of the table, but when it comes to lumens, then you only get four thousand. I mean, I think we've been phrased differently otherwise, but we can, we can talk about it, you know, additionally. Let me just ask though, when it comes to the height. Obviously, you're looking at different heights for different poles. I guess to be perfectly, just to ask directly, like, are you set on those heights? Or, or would you be at, or in your ideal world, like, are you looking for flexibility? I, I E like, well, we want ninety feet to go for all poles if we need it, but for right now, we only want, you know, we only expect seventy to eighty. Because I, you know, conceivably, we could say, all right, this pole's seventy, this pole's eighty, this pole, this pole is ninety. Uh, I guess I'm curious to see how set you guys are at those heights.
They per, per the current design, those poles are all set to achieve fifty foot candles for the footprint we're trying to achieve. So, you know, we're, it, you know, from, from the manufacturer standpoint, if they could make them all eighty or seventy, they certainly would. But because of some of those reasons, that's why some of those heights changed. So, um, this, this is the most efficient way to light the field for foot candles, based on the heights, based on, again, fourteen. You know, we start thinking about lowering some of those pole heights, that's when we start introducing another pole or two to make up for the light that, again. They still need to achieve no glare and spill.
No, no, yeah, no, I understand, I was just, it's more the, like, you've got, so you've got one pole that's at seventy and one pole's at that ninety right now. We were to say, fine, that's okay, that pole's at seventy, that pole's at ninety. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to figure out whether or not X number of months down the road, you realize, oh shit, you know that seventy foot pole? Yeah, we really needed it at seventy-five, or we needed it at eighty, or ninety, and then you'd have to come back. You know, that's, I'm, I want to make sure I know what the ask is, you know, so.
Yeah, no, this was designed for, for Moscow, which is the manufacturer we'll work with, where the exact heights themselves. So this, this is what we're proposing, that based on the design, this is what we'll be looking for.
Okay, and your drawings all specify, the ones that we have, they'll specify the heights right now, right?
Right.
Of this specific pole.
Correct, we can certainly provide that information. Yeah, I think the information we have for each of those poles was distances to the setbacks, which was part of areas, that's why we put that information, but we certainly provide all of the pole nights.
All right, any other?
Yeah, yeah, also, do you have any spec sheets on the light itself? How many lumens each one is, each pole has a, yeah, A, B, C, and D, do they all have the same number of lumens? A, have the same, B.
We have official design for Moscow, so we can certainly provide that information.
Well, I'd like to see that, just to.
Anything else? You haven't lost a shot?
Just to summarize, I'm anticipating that there's a plan.
Hold on, hold on, one second, one second, go ahead.
Well, the height, I think the way variance is needed, because I don't have any problem with it. Because thirty-five feet seems to be the height we're concerned about houses, because a fire engine company doesn't have a ladder that goes over thirty-five feet. But we, we allow cell towers to be a hundred feet. I think some, maybe some of the light poles in the parking lot there are over thirty-five feet. I don't know, it seems like they're kind of tall, but I don't see reason to keep it limited to thirty-five feet for the poles.
Sorry, go ahead, I apologize.
No, I'm sorry, I apologize, Ernie, sorry. Um, so I'm thinking that there would be that, as part of the documentation from the applicant, there would be a schedule of light poles and lumens per pole. It would be what, what would be the formal request? Do I understand that correctly?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Yes, sir.
And probably in that it would document that the, what the shading design, so that, I'm just trying to, I'm, I'm trying to make sure that. Anything that's submitted has the information necessary, it would show the shading. Right? Is there any other missing pieces that we're looking for?
We'd like to know the pattern of the lights.
Yeah, good point, Ernie, okay, great.
I assume the spec sheet would have that in there. Not that we're going to be engineering it or anything, but.
No, no. Just to document what it is.
Right.
Okay.
All right, at this time, I'm going to open up the public comment, I'm going to repeat some things I said before, so apologies for that. If you have, if you're in the room and you have any, uh, we're going to start with folks in the room, so folks on Zoom, just be patient. Um, if you have a public, if you have a comment, please state, please raise your hand, I'll call on everyone, so just be patient. Please state your name and your address. Once you've given a comment, please do not raise your hand again until, until everyone has had a chance, and we see how much time we have, et cetera. If you, uh, if you are a member of a town's board or town commission. You know, unless you're speaking on behalf of that board or commission or entity. You know, please just state your name and your address, if you are speaking on behalf of the board or commission, please say so. Again, all comments and questions should be directed to the board. I'll certainly give the applicant opportunity to respond if they want to, if they do not want to, that's okay. All right, with, and the only other thing else, please, like I said, we've got a lot of people who probably want to. Speak up, so I would just ask to keep any questions or comments somewhat concise, um, if possible. And I know that this matter has been before, um, other sort of town boards. And I, just a quick reminder, the only thing we're here to discuss today is the application before us. There's issues that have been brought up in other, you know, other boards and commissions, whatnot, have other jurisdictions. And whether you agree or disagree with what they're doing, we can't do anything about that. So I just wanted to lay that out and just say, we're really here just to talk about what's before us today. So, um, with that, any questions, comments from members of the board? Yes, sir.
My name is Kerry Lynn, and I live at thirty Orchard, so approximate to this development. I think it's, um, fair to ask the developers to think about, you know, what would be like if something like this was going on next year's house? And so really, it's about, I think, working with the community to minimize, you know, the impacts. And I have three specific concerns. The first is the on time. In other words, we heard that potentially these lights are on until ten P M, seven days a week, you know. For nine months out of the year. When do these kids sleep, do homework? I'm kind of curious about that. So are the, are the lights specifically, are they on by default? Or does somebody physically have to turn them off? Because I'm used to, to driving past, you know, sports fields, seeing the lights on, nobody's around. So as a community member, I'd like, you know, there to be minimal on time. Second is color temperature. I brought with me an article that was published this month in a N A A journal by a doctor in Salem, specificing. Dealing with specific issues with LED lighting, health and environmental issues. Because LED lighting tends to be more in the bluer part of the spectrum. And so if there's a possibility of lighting these fields with softer light. Then the intensity doesn't have to be as high, because the light is least sensitive to blue frequencies. And the final thing is intensity. I heard the engineer talk about how you need more intense lighting for baseball situations than you do for soccer. My lights at home have a dimmer on them, and so I can turn them down, you know, depending on the conditions. And so I'm wondering whether these fixtures have the capability of reducing the light when, for example, soccer games are going on, as opposed to, to baseball games. Thank you.
Right, thanks, sir.
You got one else question?
Yes.
So I'm happy to respond, the first one, the school usage, we would go from usually eight in the morning to about four thirty-five. So the evening is really for rentals or youth groups, so our kids will, students won't be using the field. So they'll be doing their homework and they've got plenty of other stuff to do, but that'll answer at least your personal, that one I can speak to.
And just so that we don't pass them back and forth, I'm just going to sort of move things along. I would ask if the applicant wants to respond, just raise your hand or just cut me off.
Talk about color intensity, or, sorry, color temperature. Has there, have there been any studies? I mean, LEDs have evolved, right? So you, you know that back in the day, all you could get were the high glare, you know, very high color temperature LEDs. And now if you walk into Home Depot, you know, you've got a whole selection of them there. And so I'm wondering, has sports lighting evolved with the evolution of the luminaires? Specifically to, you know, streetlights, for example, have gone more on the softer side, and that's improved, actually, it's reduced glare. And improved lighting, you know, and visual acuity, you know, during the night.
Thanks, sir. Other folks who are in the room? Yes, sir.
Benny Gold or sixty-seven Old Bolton Road.
And, and just, just to make clear, so Mr. Gold is an associate member of the zoning board, but he's also in the butter. And that's the reason why he's sitting over there and not here, is he's refused himself from the hearing, so I just want to make that clear. Okay, go ahead.
I'm speaking this in the butter. I just, I have two questions, if that's okay, please, one that just came up. You mentioned that after four thirty, students will be studying and the fields will be used for rentals.
Like local club programs, soccer, field hockey, lacrosse, maybe it's the town that would want to use it, you know. They rent the fields for an hour, soccer practice, lacrosse practice, something like that.
So not anybody directly involved with the school, none of the students would be playing at that hour?
I don't expect that to be the case, five o'clock is usually when all kind of after school stuff finishes. Maybe sometimes there's a game that, you know, a team's coming in from a long distance and they have to start at five o'clock, you know, and they play till six thirty, seven. Not really sure, but let's say in general, a significant percentage will be renters after five o'clock.
And, and the other question, I heard that there would be fourteen poles, lighting poles, if I heard that correctly. How, approximately how many poles per, per playing field?
I think it's on the. Yeah.
Yeah, when, when the design was done, you know, they, they were designed where it's this field surface and this field surface. So generally speaking, I think there are seven poles that light the northern field and then seven that light the southern field.
I think one difficulty is because you've got overlapping fields, you know, it's kind of the, which field are we talking about? Like, I think, like, one of the poles arguably probably is on, like, like, a couple of the poles look like they're more on one stock of fields. But theoretically, the light probably expands in both outfields of both baseball fields, so, for what it's worth. But I believe one of the images, I can't remember which one, actually has the poles on the L one oh one, L one oh, okay.
I'm, I'm just to make a comment, you know, like, when you drive by a golf field in Maynard, I mean, one seventeen, and they have lights. I don't think they've got seven poles on their field, and it's a pretty big expanse, so I don't know why this would be here.
Thank you. Other, yes, sir?
My question is directly to the board. Does it set a precedent if you approve this lighting system? Because this is only phase one, they've got other phases for other fields to be putting in, and one is going to be directly behind my house. Are they going to have similar fourteen sets of lights up above there that are going to be lit and on till ten o'clock at night? Nine months out of the year, seven days a week as well.
That's all, I'm happy to take that one, so people can keep me honest here, and the, the, the short answer is no, it does not act as a precedent. Basically, every application that comes before the board is reviewed independently. Also theoretically, the board membership can change between, you know, one board is not bound by what another board does. Which I will acknowledge, some people usually, sometimes don't like, because they can say, well, five years ago, you said this was okay, what about now? Well, guess what, some people were different, you know, before. So one of the unique things about us is that, you know, people can bring forth prior opinions and say, well, the board ruled a certain way back then, it should be this way. That doesn't necessarily carry the day. The other, the other caveat, besides the fact that the board membership changes, is I can't speak to what the zoning bylaws might be. You know, a year from now, five years from now, ten years from now. So, so the short answer is no, it does not serve as a precedent.
Okay, okay.
Exactly, it's, everything is reviewed individually, and at least in my short time here on the board, I can say that that is exactly what's happened. Especially with folks who come and run the same property and come back again.
Even this is phase one, phase two, phase three?
Doesn't make a difference, they come back and we start fresh, so. Other questions, yes, sir?
Yes, changing tool from the select board. I just wanted to publicly state the support of the select board for this project. But being here tonight, I really do want to commend Masters Academy. For really trying to take into account the concerns. Of the neighbors and the butters, to the point of even working with drones to give us an actual visual. Because that was one of the things I was trying to figure out myself from the property and things. So I really do commend them for bringing that forward and to really trying to address and answer. The questions that were put forth, as well as the design of the manufacturers that they're using. As well, where they're really bringing it to the state of the art, rather than addressing it with. Equipment and materials that are, you know, a decade old.
Thank you. Other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Beverly one twenty-one Orchard. I, just a clarification and then a question, the clarification is, an eighty foot pole is roughly eight stories high? Yes, okay. And the other one is, is there anything that would be done differently if this was, if Stowe was part of a larger dark sky preserve?
I don't know how to answer that, because we're not in that environment, so I don't know how to answer it.
I mean, I mean, the board, I don't.
That means, is there anything they could do to, um, anything they would do differently to ensure that the lights were not going up?
Okay. That's just the type of light they provide. The bylaw. No horizontal. And I think it's a different question, though, right? If we've overcome, yeah, if this was a dark light scenario, is there something else that might be appropriate? To accommodate that condition? That's true.
Yeah, he mentioned dark sky, there are dark sky preserves like in Idaho, and they do something different with the lighting. They, that could be done here to not block the stars, could be.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
That's me, some possibly town administrator. I've been working with Peter Masters and his team now for years on this project. I do want to just acknowledge the fact that they have now taken it to the drone technology to really see the impact to the neighbors. You know, one of our concern is the impact to the neighborhoods and the surrounding properties. I think this does a great job to illustrate that the impact really is minimal. It was really shocking to see that that eighty foot pole was really only visible in the parking lot. So I just want to say, anytime that the butters have had questions, I've reached out, they've addressed them, they've amended their plan. To make this the least impactful to the community as a nuisance, I'll say. You know, they really want to be part of Stowe, part of the community, work with us. And I just want to say, they've done a great job, in my opinion, this presentation really shows how much work they've put into minimizing the impact to the. The residency and the butters with the lighting concerns.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from folks in the room who have not yet shared? Okay. Is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make a comment or ask a question? Can virtually raise your hand and Michael will.
Hi, thank you, so.
I was like, oh, just state your name and address.
Oh, Aparra Barrows twenty-five Orchard Drive.
Thank you so much.
It's kind of hard watching this meeting on Zoom, because the visuals are really not coming through well. As a Zoom participant, so I guess I'm going to have to go into some of the town offices to try to see these things in person, if I can do that. It's hard for me to comprehend what this is actually going to look like. and what it's going to actually be like to live with it, and I'm kind of dismayed. I'm not, it's really gonna change the feeling around here. The villages is a large community of ninety-five homes, ninety-five families, and we are definitely gonna be impacted by this project in many, many ways. I think that the discussions in advance, it remains to be seen how it actually plays out and what it actually feels like. And I'm, I'm, just have to say I'm concerned, and I appreciate being able to attend the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on Zoom? Okay, let's see any other entries. Okay. I will give folks in the room one second opportunity, second and final, in case you'd like. Take advantage of the fact that the Zoom folks are quiet. Just out of curiosity, you guys sort of took in consideration the perspective development? That's, that's, I guess, being discussed and being applied for on the bottom?
Yeah.
I'm just curious. I appreciate the courtesy of doing so. Do you think there was, I'm just curious from your position, like, do you think you need to take the extension, considering that it's right now just in the planning stages as opposed to like actual structures?
Well, we wanted to, because we think that's the respectful thing to do. Looks like it's going to go forward in that configuration or something similar. So we, again, we thought we owed it to the board and neighbor. As a formal matter, probably not, but it's, I think just, it's good form to it.
I will say, the previous plane we're hearing, we had two weeks ago, that was a request from one of the plane, where members were supposed to take a look at that. Unless, yeah, part of it, but, you know, as we were informed, you folks this evening, a lot of these graphics will be shared within our next hearing as well.
And that particular portion of the development's on the hill, right?
So, Southwood probably correct.
Actually, I have a, it's okay.
Yeah, sure.
Specific question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I don't remember which poster was, but there's one poster where there was a pole, and it was very close to a very high tree. So you could see the pole, but if the pole was moved where that high tree was, you wouldn't see the pole. I don't know if that was the corner of the building, it just sounded like I'm gonna see it.
Yeah, this is what you referenced?
No, no.
We're sorry. It was, it was one of the whole row of.
Oh, such and such.
Alright, so strike one.
I was gonna say, if you missed this one, you're down.
Yeah, I know.
Are you gonna leave these here for people to see?
We certainly can, and we can also offer to provide this electronically to the board.
If you provide electronics, they can look at them on their home.
Yeah, actually, I think if you can send it to the files, you know, on the website, that would.
I think that's the one, you see on the ground, it's not the one you've gotten from, but this one just hiding behind it. Yeah, I think that's.
There you go.
And you see a pole, it's just, you know, it's just visible, but if it moved to like where the you know, the tree was, you wouldn't, you wouldn't see it, and I'm just wanting to add that.
Well, if you move your place in the parking lot, you'd see it for a new one, so. Yeah, I would make the argument, so I mean, this is really, this location is close to.
Jonathan, that pole can't move anyways, because that's where it's fixed on the field, right?
I think you're looking at location C, so yeah, so actually, I mean, this location, generally speaking, is really, you know, the view from the school's property, if you will. So, and, you know, again, that's from that specific view, yeah. If you're actually, you know, coming in on the eight pointer, you know, this location here is sort of moves around. Obviously, when we try taking these images, we try looking at the, you know, obviously, we could take a picture down this entire line, right? And actually, in this case, it was a situation where that was sort of our one access point, where you saw that pole, but as you started moving down the street and from other neighbors, there was other opportunities for a lot more screening, so it airs through the site clearly.
Jonathan, can you just point out the vegetation on the east side of the property up by C? I think it's, yeah.
Right there here?
Yeah, the picture is taken in front of those.
Sure, yeah, so if you're on the adjacent property taking that, there's certainly some additional screen as well.
They're just seeing the pole from the real parking lot, going, I'll see you.
I think we were trying to take the pictures from where you could see the poles. Because we, again, we weren't trying to hide anything, so we found where we could see them. Other places along those sort of lines, they disappeared essentially.
And you also showed the diagram showing where you don't see much light at the pole, from the light source itself, but that distance away, you don't see the light.
Right.
Anything over a hundred fifty feet, you're not gonna see the light at all.
You're looking at the back of the pole. Yeah, that's.
That's true, also.
That's also the other case, even though it's calm, direct light filling, it really is behind. And again, it's one of the reasons why the height and the design is too.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a follow-up question?
Absolutely.
So this may be outside the four corners, and if it is, ignore it. It strikes me that, given the age of the existing onsite development, it could well be that the parking lot lights are more likely to be intrusive than these lights are, because of the age of their design. And I'm just idly wondering if giving some thought to the hours of operation and updating the parking lot lights might have more of an impact on dark skies than the playing field lights?
Please, can I respond to that?
Absolutely, yeah.
I actually worked, sorry, Brian Lawler at S M A. So we worked with the, with those on the replacement of all of their onsite lighting back in twenty fifteen. Special permit was granted in conformance with the bylaw. Those lights were replaced, construction was done twenty sixteen-ish. So I think the lights were special permits was issued by the planning board, and I think the lighting is, all parking and roadway lighting is in compliance.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that update. That's great to hear.
Really thankful for the question.
Okay, you know, if someone looks at the lights, how they are around the field, there's very few, you're always seeing the back. For many residents, you're gonna see the back of the light, you're not gonna see the front. It's true, all the way around the field, except possibly one or two, you might see over the building, but that's about it. And they're all down to the field anyway, so you're not gonna see anything.
Right.
I think the possible sort of exception is again to the west, where it's fairly open field.
That's right.
But what that would look like, I don't know what the distance is there, but it's obviously a thousand feet at least, so.
Oh, yeah.
What it would look like at that point, I have no idea. The other caveat is what it's gonna look like in the middle winter.
As you said, they're off.
You guys, true, they're off.
Yeah, if I may, with this running again, like, you know, this is a true drone image, so you do get a little bit of sense on some of the existing vegetation between those property and the athletic fields, and then as you keep going, we could see if there's more room, but there's clearly additional vegetation all over that area.
That's only area that you can see them.
You have a direct view of the field.
Let me just make a comment on that.
Sure.
So I just, we just walked the Stowe Community Park all the way to the back. There is a whole line of vegetation, so it is not a clear, open view. And to be honest, I think the way there's a hill sort of on the Bose property, that it shields the fields a little bit from Stowe Community Park area. So that is not just an open field view.
I know all the members were took, listen, so many, from Ron, also site visits as well. Were there any, just to flag the issue, were there any questions that you had based on those site visits that they have now that they weren't able to ask then?
Thank you.
So any other questions or comments? I think there is some additional information that we would be looking for. Anything that hasn't been flagged yet? No, okay. I think the one other.
They do have to address what to do about the variance for the.
That's exactly where I was going with that, which is like, so that begs the question of sort of next, of what needs to be done about the height issue? Now, if folks disagree and think that, you know, the interpretation is such that we don't, they don't need one, then obviously, speak up. But otherwise, I think we are gonna need an application for that. Though theoretically, would it just be amended? How to work procedurally, just, just to add to the.
Just a new application form.
Okay.
And then I can attach it to the one that we have.
So, any concerns, objections?
I just wanna go back, I have one more question to look back, so with regard to the turning on and turning off, you spoke about some iPhone, some phone capability that will, is that the only way that they're turned on and off? Or is there some other mechanism that controls the cycle of the lights?
Yes, typically, there's two different ways. There is a manual operation. They usually, there'll be some sort of, which I can read, you know, depending on how the electric gets out to the site. Usually there's exterior cabinet or somewhere that has all the controls with the panels. In a need of going out there, you can get there, shut it off, and you can shut the equipment off. Or typically, the user or a few users in the school system, they have an app, they'll be able to operationally, you know, either override the lights that they're not using on a night like tonight, it's raining, or set the timer so that every single day it can be turned on and off.
So there is a way to schedule the on and off.
Yes, correct.
And then somebody could intervene and do some mechanical or in-person override of that.
Absolutely. You're gonna have security, right?
Twenty-four hours.
So you'll, the security way should be able to have that capability.
Yeah, I was just, I was just wanting to make sure, because you spoke about somebody could turn it on and off at will, and then when that's okay. So there is a schedule, they'd be running at some interval on a schedule, and then whatever, somebody needs to intervene, they could actually manage that.
Correct, and obviously, from school standpoint, it's in their best interest to not use the field, shut the lights off.
Sure.
Thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the pride of actually taking a question that was asked from the public, and now asking you guys on the issue of the dimming, is would that ever be a consideration if you have a soccer game as opposed to a baseball game?
Not typically, so typically, even at, at the soccer level, you're still going with fifty-foot candles. I noted the other sports, just because the speed of those smaller balls are just a little bit more dangerous.
Oh, no, no, I understand from a safety standpoint, you know, a baseball coming, it's eighty-five miles an hour, it's different than soccer.
Yeah, let's see, even at soccer level, at the high school level, we don't typically go less than fifty-foot candles. That's, again, that's really a standard for athletic field use at the high school level. You know, if we were talking college, it goes up to seventy to a hundred-foot candles, and then above and beyond. So, you know, we're really needing for all those sports, generally fifty-foot candles for the user and tenant.
And I know it's in the application, but can you just take two minutes and walk through sort of the specification of the bylaw legal standards for the variance, just for the board's application?
Yeah, so again, and it's in the brief, so the standard is that basically, given the shade, topography, soil conditions, or affecting the law and circumstances affecting structures on the land, like buildings, utilities, that a literal enforcement of the bylaw creates a hardship. And that you can grant relief that doesn't substantially derogate from the intent of the bylaw, essentially, those are the standards. So I think, you know, at the very beginning, we talked about the shade, soil conditions, topography of the landed structures, and how it differs, how it especially affects our lot, but not the zoning district generally. So that's, that's the way that standard is applied. And then the literal enforcement would create a hardship. So one hardship you heard that's recognized in the law is creating an unsafe condition. So actually, a case decided today that reiterated that if a literal enforcement of a bylaw ordinance would create an unsafe condition, that's considered a hardship by itself. So the other things we heard about the hardship is, if we try to, you know, spin the field to meet the setback, we're gonna lose potentially development area, the use of the building, but down the corner, relocate utilities. And all those are potential out-of-pocket expenses or opportunity costs that are also considered hardship, financial or otherwise. So I think, you know, that one's pretty clear as well. And the last one is essentially that you can grant the relief without substantially derogating from the intent of the bylaw. And, you know, the discussion that John and the exhibit set he produced and the team produced is actually complying makes it worse essentially, because you're gonna create more visibility than you want to. So you can grant the relief and sort of advance the intent of the bylaw, which is to protect the neighborhood, you know, provide screening and things like that. Those are typically the standards, and they seem pretty clear in this case. Yeah, I've been doing this a long time, as you can see from my hairline here.
You must be a lawyer.
I am. This is a very, sort of, one of the few I've had, a handful, over my many years in doing this. That really is sort of a textbook case of a variance meeting the standard, so. Do you need additional?
No, no, I just wanted to, I know, I know it's already in the application.
Yeah, no, thank you.
I wanted to think of an opportunity to provide that as well. If my notes are correct, I think three things that we're looking for essentially is a schedule per light pole, lumens, height, I think the pattern of light. Is there anything else?
It could be a plan with that same stuff noted on it, if that's easier to depict, I think.
I'll defer, I'll defer the app, so wherever the delivery method is easiest, it's nice, you can get that readily, easily readable form. And that's fine.
I was thinking, we have sort of a zoning tape, and maybe we could add it to that charting sheet. Yes, where we have the, where we have the dimension for the setbacks of the poles and things like that.
Yeah, 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 just add, add some columns, stick that in, that would be good, that way we don't have to crop, because my only concern is that you have to turn cross records, say, between map schedule and that kind of stuff, so.
And it's easier to sort of, in a decision made, to read through that.
Yes. That would be great, okay. And I think, if I'm getting the consensus correct from the board, that I think we will need an application on the height issue.
So revise the application form to add the height.
Yeah. Is there anything else that we're asking to be added?
Expect some likes of those?
Yeah, yeah, we can get those, because I have those already.
If I may, Mr. Chair, I will note that on the photometric plan, this isn't the exact plan, but this is the chart. We do have a quite, that information already with the illumination schedule, with the horizontal, the maximum, and so there's a lot of that information. We will take a look at that and figure out what else can be included.
That would be great, thank you. Yeah, and then. I can't remember. That's okay. Anything else that we need of the applicant at this point? Okay.
So what was that piece of correspondence that came in earlier today, or something like?
Oh, from the applicant?
Yeah, I know, something, a little bit, some document.
Yeah, I think the other two things that, we need a copy of the email that I think you sent in this morning, that can be circulated. And then you all can send electronic files of all of these to Michael. And that way, he can make them available through our site, and then also, that way we can take a look.
Yeah, we'll try to get over tomorrow.
Oh, that's perfect, excellent. Okay. Anything else before we continue? No, anything else for now? Oh, yes.
In one of the plans you submitted to the planning board, it has the pole heights, so that one might be.
Yeah, if you're giving it to somebody else already, go for your copy paste. No need to. No need to read that to me.
Cause they all start to approve the heights, poles and structures, so.
Right. Okay. All right, with that. So. Our next. Our next date is next Monday, correct?
Eleven four.
Yes.
There's already two here and two in that.
I can't make that one.
Oh, you can't?
Oh, I can if we had to. Yes.
Okay.
My, my son's birthday.
He's welcome to a ten. That's right, exactly. Yeah. Bring the hat over and the cup mix.
He's two, so he's not a great.
Very behaved than a lot of people I see at public hearings.
But we can't make, we can't wait till Sunday. So probably looking at a special date.
Okay, just to throw.
Yeah.
A problem there. I'm gone from the eighth until the, the seventeenth. That's okay, because I'm off for the week of the eleventh, so that's.
Could we, all right, is, is there any other date the week of the?
I just want to report that I'm local for once.
So noted.
You can't possibly fit us in on the fourth.
I mean.
Well, you have one seven fifteen, another one is seven forty-five, which was.
And I made an appointment for eight fifteen today. It could be, if you want to power through, it could be an eight thirty.
It's fine with me, but it's easy for me to say because I'm not on the other three.
Yeah. Can you remind us what's on that day?
So seven fifteen is sixty Pine Point.
That's a new one.
And that's a new one. At seven forty-five is fifty-six Harvard Road, which is the dance studio. At eight fifteen, it's an appointment with someone who's looking to see if a special permit is needed or not.
Oh, is it advisory?
Advisory, yes. So she's looking for the board to make a determination because. Yes. That one should, that one should take five minutes.
All right. So, I mean, I get no reason doing it at eight thirty. Or, or we could gamble and go six thirty. But I'll. Ruth, now that you're local, you're just chomping at the bit here.
I'm all over it, man. After that, after the eleven to one in the morning one, I'm, I'm, I'm an early girl.
Oh, shoot, that's right. I'm sorry. No, no, no.
No, I can reschedule that. It's. Cause no, cause it sounds like no other dates coming together.
What would be better or worse?
Yeah, you can zoom in.
That, that will wait the rest of time.
What, what would be, what would be better earlier late?
Oh.
You can see right, like, you don't, I mean, not to be blunt by this, but you don't need to be at the other ones. You just need, it'd just be this one.
Right, okay. So then, actually, but I think it, I mean, it'll change anyway, so it doesn't.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, cause.
I just figured.
Oh, okay.
Be anytime.
Sorry.
We could send cake.
Will accept.
All right, all right, should we do eight thirty? Yeah.
Can we do early?
Do I do six thirty?
Yeah.
I mean, I get no problem starting early. You sure?
Yeah.
Good?
Well, don't do it just for me, you guys.
You really don't need me.
Okay. All right, well, in that case, I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we continue this hearing to November fourth at six thirty in the evening.
Second motion?
I have a motion, I have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, continue the hearing at six thirty.
Thank you, guys.
Back here next Monday. Thank you.
It's been a long time.
Actually, no, 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 it's okay. As we don't have anything else, I'll entertain a motion. I have a motion, I have a second, hearing and discussion, none, all in favor?
Bye.